But Ann did a good job. Okay. Well, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, we do thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hutkins. And on my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Todd Wilchun and Commissioner Bill Avery. And I'm Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. Assisting us this morning, we do have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lengren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. Will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you for joining in. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
The copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one are minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016. Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through November 15th, 2016.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is new business, and we're going to switch order here. We're going to start with new business 3B. This is a resolution instituting eminent domain proceedings against Cook Investment Partners LP, Project C 55G 402, or I'm sorry, 407 Bracket 2 Track Number 1.
This morning, I am here to ask that we go ahead and start eminent domain proceedings for the piece of property owned by Cook Investments located on the west side of North 27th Street. I just want to remind the Board that this grading project has been on the 1 in 6 plan and has been approved by this Board through consecutively through the years 2010 through 2016. In addition to that, there are 10 other pieces of ground that have already been purchased to make our right-of-way 120 feet wide for this corridor. And page 42 of the current LRTP requires that any roadways built within the three-mile extra jurisdiction of the city of Lincoln have a 120-foot right-of-way.
Just for, I guess, the audience, the LRTP Long Range Transportation Plan?
That is correct. Okay. Bill?
How wide is that right-of-way right now?
Okay, so as the right-of-way exists right now, it, you know, I'd have to take a look. I know we have a little additional right-of-way on the south side or on the east side of the road. The current right-of-way is really the old right-of-way, which would have been 66 feet wide. So what we're looking to do here is to acquire the statutory easement right-of-way, so the 33 feet on the center line, Mr. Cook actually owns to the center line of the road. So we're looking at acquiring 60 feet on the west side of the center line.
I'd like to follow up.
Okay, sure.
You indicated that this has been on the 1 in 6 schedule for several years. What is, what has changed that requires eminent domain?
You know, that's an interesting question. We have approached, approached Mr. Cook many times, Cook Investments many times, in order to acquire this right-of-way. We are at an impasse and we need to start the eminent domain process in order to construct this road.
Is there a project planned for this road that requires this action now?
Yes, there is. In fact, my office actually started design of this road prior to 2007. In 2000, you know, and it was on the 1 in 6 plan to be constructed from 2010, and it still is, of course, currently. What held us up with this project was the environmental permitting. The environmental assessment took us a significant amount of time to get. We received it last year. Mr. Cook had told us that once we received the environmental permits for this, that he would sign. He has yet to sign, so we are recommending moving forward with eminent domain.
And how long have you had the environmental permits?
Since June of last year.
And how, they have a lifetime, right, or lifespan? How long do these permits last?
This permit will expire in March of 2018.
Okay. Well, I have to state my general opposition to eminent domain. This has been an issue that I was involved in while I was in the legislature, and our laws are a mess. If you've looked at eminent domain laws, you know that they are a mess. I tried to straighten it out. I had good legal assistance to do so, and it became almost impossible. Just couldn't get enough people on board to make it worth the time. I am not in support of eminent domain in this instance. I've been out there and I personally inspected that road. Don't know how it could be part of an extension of development on North 27th. You've got a, the street, as you know, does not go straight. It has a jog of about, what, 100 yards to the east, and it's at right angles. So if you were trying to develop that part of North 27th, it seems to me it would be a very awkward pattern of traffic, where you cross the bridge, you have a stop, then you have a sharp right, then a sharp left in order to stay on North 27th. So my plan is not to support this. However, I do want to support the 1 in 6. So to be consistent, I will be abstaining on this vote.
Go ahead.
Just a question. I live in the area. I mean, I live very close, actually, so I see a lot of traffic diverting off North 27th at the interstate, continuing on, turning right, then turning left and heading north. This is included in the comprehensive plan, the 2040, as a rural collector road. Is that correct?
It is included in the, and when we talk about, so you're talking about the LRTP or the comprehensive plan in general?
In general, the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so it is in the LRTP. We issue that in five-year increments through 2040. It is on the current LRTP, which was approved in 2011. And it talks about how we need to acquire 120 feet of right-of-way anytime we are, anytime we are improving a road within that three-mile jurisdiction.
Pam, you mentioned that tenant, other landowners are affected by this project and all have agreed to the increased right-of-way, correct, at this point?
That is correct.
And I know that you've had several conversations with, with Mr. Cook, and I think that if you could restate those, either you or your staff, I think we want to make it clear that we're not taking this decision lightly. How many contacts your office has had regarding these negotiations?
I believe we've had somewhere around 25 conversations and a couple face-to-face meetings.
And Larry?
Yes, Engineer Dingman. Really appreciate a lot of the modernization that you've brought to the department, and I think you've done an awful lot of good. Can you, I went up and had a conversation with Mike Brinzo about this, and he does not have anything on his maps that show that there's any immediate expansion or large factories or land demands in this area. Why is it important to you and your office that this road be expedited and stay as high on the 1 in 6 as it is?
Well, Commissioner, Mr. Brinzo isn't here to comment this morning. I don't know what the nature of the conversation was. I can tell you that, you know, that 120 is very explicitly defined in, on page 42 of the current LRTP. I can tell you that this project has been in my 1 in 6 plan all the way back to 2010. In addition, you know, I have presented it in the 1 in 6 as an engineer that I've prepared for the last three years. And so, you know, Mr. Brinzo in planning has had to be aware because he was present, and we do coordinate the 1 in 6 with the Planning Department, so I'm not aware of the nature of the conversation that you must have had with him.
Again, the question to you, why do you feel that this road needs to be put in over and above others, or that it has such a high priority? Could you put the road in without taking the full 120-foot right-of-way? In light of the discussions we just had a week ago Thursday with Micky Espinoza of the Public Works Department, where it sounded like both of you were saying we need to reexamine the RUTS criteria, and in some cases, maybe we do not need to take this much right-of-way?
Ms. Espinoza and I, although we are looking at the RUTS program as a whole, both of us are committed to that we need to preserve the right-of-way corridor for the future, and that is one thing we're in agreement with. We have not been able to have any discussions due to some transition in her staff to determine what that will look like or how we'll bring it back to this Board in the future. But what I'll tell you is, this road is important. It does meet the traffic counts to be graded and improved. It does have some site distance problems and some grading things that we need to fix on it in order for it to, to meet the criteria for the traffic that it currently has on it. In fact, it nearly meets the criteria to, to be put on the map to be paved. And so, as I've come forward to this Board repeatedly over the last couple of years, I've brought you two maps, one that is the counts that are over 300 cars, which then we know that we need to start thinking about paving that. And then there's a second map that I've brought you that are counts more than 250 cars. And we know that's kind of on the watch list to be paved. And so, this road does have more than 250 cars a day on the southern portion of it, and it has been a project in our office that has been important. We have already spent to date over $185,000 to acquire right-of-way in this corridor. In addition to that, we have spent over $15,000 to get the environmental assessments and permitting with consultants. And of course, prior to my arrival, the staff did not track their time by projects. That does not include any staff time, and there's been considerable staff time on this project.
Could this road be put in there with two lanes going each way and a turning lane without acquiring the trees to the west? Could it be done?
No.
And why?
There's 120 feet of right-of-way that are needed if you're going to look at that ultimate graded section. That's the standard. Bill?
I want to explain a little bit more about my position on eminent domain. I am not opposed to all instances of eminent domain. I just believe that if you're going to use such an extreme measure, then you have to have a compelling public interest to do so. And I have been unconvinced that this project is meeting that particular criteria. So it's not a compelling public interest to me. I haven't heard any evidence to counter that sufficiently. So that is why I do not intend to support eminent domain. There ought to be a way to work this out with the landowner. I see that he is here, and I hope that he will address that.
Todd?
Just to clarify, this is, what is the average daily traffic counts for this section of road?
I'd have to go back and pull. I don't, I didn't bring my, my traffic count maps with me today, but it's, it's over 250 cars a day.
Right, and it's been in our 1 in 6 plan for, since 2010?
It has been in our 1 in 6 plan 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, 14, 15, and 16. And it is again in the draft for 17.
And the commissioners would have approved right-of-way payments to all the other landowners as part of the process. So again, throughout those ensuing years, we made, in essence, approval of the plan continually.
Not only did we approve the plan, we also approved the acquirement of the land included in the plan.
Right. And the contracts for appraisal. And the contract, yeah. Larry?
My position is very much the same as Senator Avery's. Having been a victim of eminent domain with branched oak, which 22 of us farmers were evicted and our land taken, 18 of the 22 by eminent domain, been through the process, agree that it's less than a perfect process. I saw U.S. Marshals carry grandmothers out of their homes in rocking chairs, so it can be quite involved. I too believe that we need eminent domain when there are roads that need to be built, power lines that need to go in. Sometimes it's the resource of, of last resort. It's something that you don't want to use unless you absolutely have to. But when there's a way to get what you need done, to build a road, to put the power line in without going through eminent domain, I think that's something we need to do. As I have had this in my district, Engineer Dingman inherited this problem. It's not her problem. I voiced my objection to Don Thomas when he wanted in here, and here's my reasoning. I don't think it's absolutely necessary when we've got 12 to 16 roads closed because we don't have money for bridges, and yet we're improving a road that is open and is adequate for people to transfer in. What really bothers me is just one mile to the west, we have a paved road, 14th Street. Two miles to the east, we've got a four-lane, Highway 77. So, and, and you just go for two miles and you go up to the Waverly Road, which is paved. So without a major development or some imperative reason why this road continually needs to be expedited, I don't see that it should be that high of priority. I don't disagree that this is a road that we'd like to look at in the future. We mentioned that it meets the traffic count. Engineer Dingman, how many roads do we have that are over the traffic count? And they'd all like to be blacktopped and engineered and true. So I know we've got roads with over 400 or 500 cars a day that would like to have improvements. And so I just question, do we really need to use eminent domain to take out some trees which are stabilizing the bank next to the Tiger Beetle area? And I just don't see it as being absolutely necessary. I don't think that the landowner is opposed to letting ground be used up to it, but do you really need to take that 56 or 60 trees that are probably 25, 30 years old that were hand-planted and put in there at this, this, this point? That's my point. And I'm not opposed to eminent domain, but I think we use, need to use it only in those severest of cases where there's no other way of proceeding.
Mr. Cook, would you like to make a comment?
We've met before. My name is Gary Cook, and I live in Lincoln, and we own property, obviously, on North 27th Street, which is the eminent domain issue that's being brought up right now. This issue, we've been working on with the County Attorney's Office prior to the current county engineer for quite some time. The bone of contention that my family has had since day one is, it seemed to me to not be required. I couldn't feature when the limits of construction in the future, and I'm not privy to the exact plans, but into the 2040 plan does not show any development in that area whatsoever. Therefore, when it was approached to us about widening it to 60-foot, it made absolutely no sense whatsoever. And in the situation that we're dealing with right now, from a financial standpoint of the budget that you're dealing with and all the issues that we're really dealing with on a county basis, whether it be roads, bridges, other things, it didn't seem to me to be high enough up that it would ever happen. So when we started working against this or listening to it, you know, back in 20, I can't remember how many years, six years plus ago, I voiced the same opposition to it, although I did not come to the Board and voice my opposition to it. There is wetlands that are being, have to go into Wetlands Bank right now that are being mitigated by the county in order to do this, and I could not understand why it was a necessary thing to do. That was why I was opposed to it. I did not agree that if there was, if there was a 404 permit and all the permits, you know, with the Fish and Wildlife and everyone else, that we would agree to a right-of-way. I said that I wouldn't even discuss right-of-way easement until there was actually permits that could be issued for it. I didn't think they might have. Unless you have any questions, I appreciate your time and thanks a lot for listening.
Can I ask, Mr. Cook, right, Cook or Koch?
Oh, it's like C double O K. You can blame my father, I had nothing to do with it.
This has been going on for a long time.
Yes.
Have you made any statements to the engineer's office that you would be willing to actually agree to this widening? Have you ever said that, yes, we'll do that?
If I would have said, yes, we would do that, we would do it. We've had other right-of-ways that have been used for culverts, roads, everything else. It's not that we're necessarily opposed to right-of-way when it's in the best interest of the public. I mean, that's a necessary thing that needs to be done. This project, and obviously it has to do with the 56 trees that we have, pine trees, mature pine trees along there, although the engineer's office says maybe we could find some way to maybe not take them all. The minute that the, the right-of-way does belong to the county, they can do whatever they please regardless of that, and we understand that. And I was just opposed to losing $36,000 worth of pine trees to be replaced by virtue of something I did not feel was really that imperative, and particularly for going to eminent domain. It just didn't seem to me to be that imperative.
As I remember, those trees stand by themselves. If you look at the rest of North 27th, they don't, there aren't any real trees except a few that are volunteers. Is that correct?
I didn't understand exactly what you said.
Well, you have about 56 to 60 trees on the west side.
Correct.
They're all lined up, spaced properly or equally, and obviously, they were planted. These are not volunteers. I didn't see anything like that along North 27th.
Taking them down. Just taking them down.
Right?
Well, let's, the engineer explain.
It's a reason.
Last spring, when we knew that we were going to receive the environmental assessment, we went ahead and we took down all the trees in the corridor in advance of April 1st so that we could meet the migratory bird act and not have to have a biologist inspect the trees or, or be delayed while we were waiting for nesting birds to grow up. So the trees in the corridor, and there were a lot of very large, very mature trees in this corridor, have already been removed, except for the trees on Mr. Cook's property, which we did not remove because we had not attained the right-of-way on Mr. Cook's property yet.
Is it your professional opinion that the widening cannot take place without removal of these trees?
Based on our current design drawings that show a limit of construction and where the slope for the newly graded road would tie back, it is my opinion that the trees would, would have to be removed, yes.
And therefore, it is a compelling public interest worthy of eminent domain?
I would not have brought it forward if I did not believe that. Larry?
Question for Engineer Dingman. Would you be willing to leave those trees and put it in writing that you would and stay as far away from the roots as you can to do the grading if Mr. Cook would agree to it? Would you do everything in your power to, to save those trees? There's, there's quite a bit of right-of-way that you should be able to get enough dirt to elevate the road and, and do it. I'd sure like to see a spirit of compromise here in the fact, I don't think anywhere else on that road, there were 50 or more trees hand-planted of one variety. I know there were a lot of natural trees down in the draws. I know some of the people that had acreages along there had, had trees that were removed, but I don't think anything is massive and uniform and hand-planted as these 56 trees. Is there any way at all that we can come to a meeting of the minds here? I think Mr. Cook is willing to negotiate. Is there anything that you could do to help facilitate so we don't have to go to eminent domain on this?
Not at this time, Commissioner.
Hate to see that type of an attitude.
Well, based on the explanation of the county engineer, I would move approval.
Second. It's moved in second that we approve the resolution that institutes eminent domain proceedings against Cook Investment Partners. Any discussion? Yes, Bill?
I indicated that I was going to abstain, but after listening to the testimony, I will be voting no.
Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
No.
Hutkins?
No.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes to no.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
New business 3A is comprehensive plan conformance number 16008, resolution in matter of adopting the 1 in 6 year road and bridge construction program for Lancaster County fiscal years 2017 and 2018 through 2022.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, as you may recall, we met on November 1st in the evening to a fairly packed house. I think we had some great public commentary. In addition to that, I did go out to the four quadrants of the county where we invited the smaller towns and villages and published it in their paper, and we had some pretty good conversations out, out in the county, too. And we had some pretty good conversations out, out in the county, too. So now I bring before you for approval, the one and six year road, road and bridge construction program for, for 2017 and then years 2018 through 2022.
I will move approval of comprehensive plan number 16008.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the comprehensive plan of 16008. Any discussion? Bill, Larry?
Okay. Well, Engineer Dingman, I, I really appreciate going out to the villages and visiting with them. I think that's probably the best discourse and a number of those village officials have really appreciated. I know that you've had a lot of hard work with Waverly to finish up on that culvert and, and Elba Road out there, something that I have tried to get in for nearly 30 years and, and you accomplished it. And it wasn't easy. You've done a, a lot of good things and you brought a lot of modernization to the department. I just think that maybe it's time that we prioritize or reprioritize our resources. When a road is closed on a street in Lincoln, it's kind of an inconvenience to go four blocks, three to four blocks to go around the block. When a road is closed in rural Lancaster County, it can be usually three miles to go around, sometimes four. And in some cases where we don't have mile roads going through, it's six miles to go around. And with as many bridges as we have closed, is it a time to reprioritize? And, and I certainly agree with you on that we've got a lot of blacktopping to do. We've got a lot of resurfacing to do. We've got a lot of bridges to rebuild. But shouldn't we maybe pull back on, on paving projects and those sort of things and get these bridges done as quickly as possible so that we can get those roads open again? The rural taxpayer doesn't have fire protection paid for with their taxes. They have to pay an additional assessment. They pay an additional assessment for library privileges. But law enforcement and their roads, their access to their property are the two main things that they look to county government for. And when you can't get to your property, we've got one gentleman in my district over there on McCalvy Road to check on his grandfather, has to go four and a half miles away to get a quarter of a mile to oversee his grandfather. People have to go through other people's property to harvest their corn this fall. We've got school bus routes that are disrupted and mail routes that are disrupted. And we've asked, at least several of us commissioners have asked for prioritization and a timetable when we can get these roads open. And that's the reason that, that I questioned the one and six road program. Commissioner Wilchun brings up a point. I think in the past, it is the county board's decision to, to okay the one and six projects. And I think basically we've, I don't recall in my 30 years, a time that I, I haven't voted for the one and six or haven't approved it. But I think maybe we need to reprioritize and look at it a little bit deeper and not just approve them every year without a lot of meaningful discussion. Because as, as Commissioner Wilchun just said on the issue that we talked about, you had a chance for the last four or five years while it was on the six year program to object. Why, why is the objection coming now? So I'd like to hear which, what you have to say in regard to that.
Well, Commissioner Hudson, in response to you, I would just like to remind the public that I take the closing of bridges very seriously. As a licensed engineer, it is my responsibility and my ethical, to me, ethical responsibility to, if I believe that the public is in danger, it's my responsibility to, to protect them.
No question about that.
Furthermore, Federal Highway Administration and Nebraska Department of Roads sets forth criteria for bridge inspections. The, the criteria are very, very defined. It's a manual that is several hundred pages. And it is very precise when we have erosion behind an abutment or erosion underneath an abutment. And it states the bridge must be closed. Now, I mean, I'll humbly tell you that when we started getting those reins in August, and I knew we were close. I knew we were close prior to August to having to close many of these bridges. We have 32 bridges that are on the scour critical list that require an emergency plan of action, 32. So when we were hit repeatedly those first few weeks in August, and I knew we were hanging on by a thread and the threads started breaking, I have to tell you that I sat in my office and reviewed these plans and I cried because I know in my heart and soul, I know how much these bridges and these roads mean to people. I am engineered by background. I will follow the criteria and the rules. But that doesn't mean that the rules make me happy. But we have to be right. I have to protect the citizens. And when I determine, or my staff determines, that a bridge is a clear and present danger to the public, the bridge must be closed and it must be closed immediately. I'd like to speak a little bit about the prioritization. I have come to the board on two occasions now, and I have gone over the list of bridges that have been closed. And I have grouped them by bridge type. And I have told the board that, that as I move forward, we have several of these bridges that we're trying to get into the Nebraska Transportation Innovation Act in order to get grant money for. If I had started work on any of those bridges prior to that, they would be disqualified and we wouldn't have been able to put them in the program. Unfortunately, these bridges are closed at a time when this program is coming out. We now have until December 1st to submit bridges. And we're still unfortunately, because it's brand new, brand new legislation, we're still asking questions on what bridges we can get into the program. I think it's important that I don't step forward and disqualify us from getting grant funding where we could get grant funding, because I feel I owe that to the property tax owner, property taxpayers and the citizens of Lancaster County. In addition to that, I want to remind this board that acquiring permits, 404 permits and floodplain permits, these are in many cases 1930s bridges. There is no hydraulics or hydrology or flow information on them. We're going to have to create that and then we're also going to have to get the necessary permits. That really is a 12 to 18 month process. So in the meantime, we need to continue to work on the other things that we have in the county. So that is why I've brought forth this one and six plan. There was a lot of time and thought that went into it. It was coordinated with, with people from all over the county, as well as the city of Lincoln and the planning staff.
Just follow up.
Oh, follow up.
Would you speak to, would it make sense to pull back on the overlay and the paving projects and divert the money into bridges? And I can understand maybe why you, you can't make a determination or prioritization prior to December 1. I, and, you know, don't dispute your authority and your responsibility to close bridges when they're unsafe. But have you thought or have you considered pulling back the paving and overlay projects on roads that are open in favor of diverting those funds to this bridges since we've got 32 of them, as you mentioned, that need attention?
I think it's easy when we step forward to remember that we have a bridge problem. But I think that what I need to continue to convey to you as commissioners and to the citizens of Lancaster County is we have an overall infrastructure problem. And it's not a new problem and we're not the only county with the problem. The counties adjacent to us have much bigger problems. When you speak to overlay, we need to remember that I had several emergency closures this summer when it was very hot from roads that completely disintegrated to the point that we had to close them. And in fact, this board had to take action in order to do a change order on South 40th Street between Roca Bee and Saltillo, because we were just that far behind with our pavement overlays. So the reality is, is we need about 90 miles of pavement overlaid in Lancaster County right now. I've put about 20 in the budget. So we're already so far behind. But in addition to that, it is now mid-November. We haven't seen the FEMA money yet. They've been here, they've inspected, they, they have approved the road damage and culvert damage that we had. They have looked at a couple of the bridges, not all the bridges. But we're still waiting on well over $2 million into the fund that would do overlays. If we do not get a reimbursement of that $2 million plus from FEMA within the next couple of months, I'll already have to roll back that overlay program. And then we risk not only having closed bridges, but having closed roads because they're impassable.
Thank you.
It's not a one-pronged issue.
Back, back to the questions about bridges, because this comes up quite often when we're, we've all had those conversations with property owners to, I don't understand the process. When these bridges get closed, in order to even begin the process of deciding what course of action we take, you would need to conduct a hydrology study to determine the flows of the waterway. But then once you, you know, do develop a plan, whether it involve a culvert, a pipe or even the construction of a new bridge, there's a permit process through federal government. It's the Army Corps of Engineer 404 permit. But if there's a critical habitat, you also involve the US Fish and Wildlife Service. And these become very difficult to obtain. And, and they take months, if not years, to obtain, depending on what type of species you're dealing with. And so I think that's where sometimes we need to be, to do a better job of explaining the process. Because it, it does, it's not a good answer, but it's, it's the answer. I mean, it's, it's the truth.
Bill?
I want to comment one more time on eminent domain. This is a part now of the one and six. We just approved it. What my objection to this whole issue has been and will continue to be, the use of eminent domain in order to achieve the engineering design that you support. I'm not necessarily opposed to the development of North 27th or the widening of North 27th. I'm opposed to eminent domain. I do not believe this project rises to the level of a serious and compelling violation of the public interest. So I am, I'm, I'm probably just going to vote no on the four, on the two, one and six because the eminent domain clause is in there.
Let's see, we do have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay, okay, please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
No.
Hudson?
No.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
New business 3C is appointment of Tracy Edgerton and Thomas Beckius to the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission for terms commenced in January 1st, 2017 and ending August 24th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the appointments of Tracy Edgerton and Thomas Beckius. Any discussion? Yes, Larry?
Just like to say that appreciate the opportunity to meet the candidates and visit with them and Director Carey for making that happen and bringing us two very fine, qualified candidates that I think will look at all the issues and do what's best for the citizens of Lincoln Lancaster County.
Okay, please call the rule.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
D is an agreement between Patricia Westendorf and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Department of Community Corrections to provide safety training option program instruction to participants eligible to participate in the Lancaster County Traffic Diversion Program. The county shall pay $100 per stop class instructed term of the contract is December 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Good morning, Kim Etherington, Department of Community Corrections. This is just adding to the pool of instructors that we have for stop to make sure our classroom can always be covered in case of an emergency or illness or those kinds of things. Ms. Westendorf has taught stop class, stop classes in the past, so she's well trained and ready to go and excited to bring her on board.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve this agreement with Patricia Westendorf and Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
E is a contract with Rise and Shine to provide annual cleaning services to the county engineer office shop and weed control office. Term of the contract is November 28th, 2016 through November 20th, through November 27th, 2017. Cost to county is not to exceed $9,900.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve this contract with Rise and Shine. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
3F is approval of Keno Human Services Prevention Fund Round 41 Recommendations.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second, that we approve the Keno Human Services Prevention Fund Round 41. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
G is an amendment to grant contract C dash 16 dash 43 with families inspiring families to provide wraparound training. The amendment extends the term of the contract through December 31st, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve this amendment to the grant contract. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
H is an amendment to kind of contract C dash 12 dash 703 with Selco Partnership doing businesses Verizon Wireless using WSCA contract 1907, State of Nebraska contract 5323304 for wireless voice service, wireless broadband service, accessories and equipment. The amendment extends the original contract term from August 24th, or excuse me, from August 1st, 2012 through October 31st, 2016, with the option to renew for one additional two-year term to August 1st, 2012 to June 30th, 2019, with no additional renewal options. The estimated cost to the county for the extended period of November 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019 is not to exceed $156,800.
Bob, would you like to come forward and visit about this? This sounds really complicated.
Yeah.
And expensive.
The agenda item is probably as long as a contract. I'm just kidding.
Bob Waller, purchasing agent. Basically, so what it was is where we piggybacked this contract through WISCA and the state of Nebraska. And Verizon changed their terms kind of midway through the process here to remove one of the renewals and extend through 2019. Is that right, Dave? So we are agreeing to carry our contract through 2019 as well. So that's the, that part of it. The, the cost part there of the 156,000, that should be through the period of 2019. So that would be 50 some thousand dollars per year. And I, I guess I could say right now that you probably will see an amendment to that coming here, probably in the next two months or so, as we continue to move around our cell phone and data plans from different areas to specifically the county at this point with the sheriff's office.
Todd?
So is this the entire county, every county cell phone? Or is this broke up by department or?
That's, that's the entire county. Right now, like for LSO, some of their data plans and their cell phones go through LPD. But they are working at moving that over to their own account. But for the most part, the best that we can tell out of the, I believe it's around 1,300 cell phones and data plans, that is the county's share of it.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Larry?
A question for Commissioner. Todd, you're kind of our IT go-to person on this. Are you comfortable with this contract?
Given the number of cell phones?
Yes.
I mean, and, and the, yeah, because, yeah, we're moving to a point where the cell phone companies
the, the best company to go with in, in our coverage area. They have probably the best coverage of any of the major cellphone companies.
And, and that's a key factor in it. As we worked with LSO, LPD, and LFR, um, the coverage part of it had to be, um, all the way across the board from one end to the other. There are a few spots here and there, and people are aware of those. Um, but we did meet with all three of them as we continue to, um, look at different plans and the way that we can structure our cellphone services. And, um, so I think we're moving towards, um, some really good, um, changes in how we do business with Verizon, and, uh, possibly reducing our costs as well.
Bill?
Uh, I read about, uh, a new company, ALO, um, planning to, or preparing for, uh, cellphone, uh, service in this area. And they are, um, at least at this point, uh, indicating that their service will be a lot cheaper. If we lock ourselves into a three-year contract, uh, won't that, um, essentially remove us from, um, opting into ALO if, uh, when they are ready and up and running?
Our contracts have, um, thirty-day, uh, termination for convenience if we were to ever have the option of going to another company.
And saving money is a convenience, right?
Uh, it can be, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
Based on the recommendation from the purchasing agent, I'd move approval.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Selco Partnership. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Three I is an amendment to county contract C dash fourteen dash six twenty-six with Cardiac Science Corporation, using the Purchasing Solutions Alliance Contract Number Fourteen Dash One Hundred for automated external defibrillator, defibrillators, related products and services. The amendment renews the contract from October ninth, two thousand sixteen, through October eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed three thousand dollars.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Cardiac Science Corporation. Any discussion? Yes, please.
Uh, they're in place, but they're worthless if they're not serviced and kept up to date. And, uh, we received a number of these, uh, from the Lancaster County Medical Association. At least we didn't have to buy them in the first place, but we do need to make sure they're maintained.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Seems to me that three thousand dollars won't buy you very much. These are expensive.
Just to make sure the batteries are in them and they're up to date. It's not to replace them, it's just to keep them going.
It's kind of maintenance, it's a maintenance sort of thing, yeah. Okay, um, please call the rule.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is an amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash five seventy-eight with a photo ident- identification for the annual supply of inmate ID wristbands for county corrections. The amendment renews the contract from December first, two thousand sixteen, through November thirty, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed six thousand five hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with the photo identification. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash two seventy-three with Lawmans and Shooter Supply, Inc., for the annual supply of county corrections, uniform accessories. The amendment provides for price increases per attachment A of approximately five hundred dollars for the remainder of the contract term, with a revised total amount of eleven thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the amendment to the county contract with Lawmans and Shooter Supply, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L was an agreement with Discreet Wireless, Inc., doing businesses, uh, NextTrack for the annual supply of vehicle GPS systems, quote, number forty-five eighty-three, including amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash five forty-seven, renewing the contract from November fifth, two thousand sixteen, through November fourth, two thousand nineteen. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents, and authorizing Sharon Mulder, Assistant, Assistant Purchasing Agent, to accept the terms and conditions provided in the amendment through the contractor's website.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Um, this is a little unusual, um, for the second part of this agenda item. We are asking the, the board authorize Sharon Mulder from purchasing, basically to go to the, uh, vendor's website and click the "I Accept" button on, on their website. It's been a long time, this, uh, long discussion with this vendor on how to get this amendment done. The terms and conditions that she will be accepting are in your packet before you. It's been attached to the written amendment, but for some reason, they will not agree that we can proceed without clicking the button. So, we are just asking for the simple authority for Sharon to click that button.
Yeah. Bill?
Uh, you may not know the answer to this, Dave, but, uh, seventeen thousand dollars for GPS systems, these are units? Separate units? Because you, you can get a, uh, GPS on your cellphone.
I think I can help you, Bill. Uh, this is a, the agreement that we've had with GPS in the vehicles in the county assessor appraiser's staff vehicles for, I believe it's either two or three years now. That, that initial term was up. We've renegotiated, uh, actually saving a thousand bucks a year from what we have been paying to extend this contract for three years. It's, it's not a new contract, it's an extension of the existing. It's for the, the, uh, GPS tracking of all the vehicles in our fleet.
And you can't do that with the apps on, uh, cellphones?
No, sir. It, it, uh, it's, it's a very powerful tool, and we can, uh, it's for efficiency purposes and tracking with, when a taxpayer calls and says, "Is that one of your cars out in my neighborhood? There's something suspicious." We can pinpoint exactly where that, uh, vehicle is.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it's, it's used for a number of purposes, but, uh, this is, in essence, is a continuation.
Not just as a way to find yours, your...
No, it's, it's not a how-to-get-from-point-A to-B at all, no. It's completely, uh, different.
Credit for your health.
Yep.
Property.
Okay, Bill, uh, Larry?
Okay. And I want to thank, um, County Deputy County Attorney Durbin for meeting with me this morning and explaining I had a lot of problems with, um, with item, uh, two, that we had grant that kind of authority, but, uh, it's just the only way they're gonna do business, so that's what we have to. Do we have a motion?
I don't.
Not yet.
Not yet, no.
I would move that we, uh, approval of item L.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Discreet Wireless. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none of the agenda we do so at this time.
Gary Aldridge, Lincoln, Nebraska. Unlike the local press, this I will not ignore. Airfield blast kills four Americans. Bagram Airfield, Afghanistan, twelve November, two thousand and sixteen. Two U.S. Army soldiers killed. PFC Tyler Iubelt, I-U-B-E-L-T, twenty, Tamara, Illinois, twenty. And Sergeant John Perry, P-E-R-R-Y, thirty, Stockton, California. Both First Cavalry, Fort Hood, Texas. Two non-military contractors killed, names not released. Also, sixteen U.S. service personnel, one Polish soldier wounded. This has become, is, very serious business. Some may remember I offered an observation sometimes, sometime before the election, about political ads on TV. Political ads drive out mail insufficiencies and other things. About that, I am not the least unhappy. This election is in our rearview mirror, and so consumer products recapture airtime. Evening National News, Wednesday last, during, quote, "And when we return," i.e. a commercial break, I toggled between two networks, surprisingly or not, both in commercials at the same time. I was bombarded by Otesla, Menards, Clary Spray, Prevagen, Progressive Insurance, Depends, DAV, AARP Medicare Insurance, ZellGenz, Aleve, Capital One Card, a Disney movie, Boost, Alka-Seltzer, and mercifully last, Consumer Cellular. Ain't private enterprise beautiful? Tuesday last, in some precincts, I was on the ballot. Some may have seen or been told about that. And surprise of surprises, on Wednesday, when I looked at the results, it seems I was a winner. Ain't democracy beautiful? I almost, almost called the Office of Secretary of State to say, "You can't do this to me. I demand a recount." Now, I'm just playing with you. I am an elected member of the board. The term used is Director of the Lower Platte South NRD. I think the NRD and city and county government have collaborated and/or cooperated on issues related to water at AL. I offer here no quid pro quo. Today I speak only for myself. I can or will always find time to discuss and/or listen to issues of mutual interest for the safety sake of our citizens, our taxpayers, our owners.
Okay. Thank you for the comments.
Congratulations.
Next is number five announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, at eight-thirty a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio, the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not, sorry, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will meet with the Lancaster County Agricultural Society on Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven p.m. at the Lancaster Event Center in the Lancaster Room at forty-one hundred North Eighty-four Street, Lincoln. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, at nine a.m. in room, in room one-twelve, the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV Cable Channel Five. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE dot gov, under Five City TV Video on Demand, or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the rule.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the Board of Commissioners is adjourned, and let's move on to the Board of Equalization.
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, copy of all room material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Also, attendance this morning, Scott Gaines from the county assessor's office. Agenda nine, one minutes. Approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any, any corrections? Please call the rule.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I would move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.